Thank you very much. We'll move to board correspondence. I think, having none, we'll do a bittersweet recognition of retiring staff.
So, I always enjoy this because we get to recognize our staff members, but as Dr. Spelcy said, it's also bittersweet for the district because we're losing some very beloved educators. And we did recognize a number of them mid-year in December. And we have six more retirees that we are recognizing tonight and three who are with us this evening. So I'm going to first read the proclamations for the three retirees who are not with us. And then for the three retirees who are here, I am going to ask you what to podium when I speak about you while we read your resolution. So first, I will start off with Miss Gwen Blake. This proclamation regarding Gwen Blake shall be read at the public meeting of the Watchon Hills Regional High School Board of Education on June 1st, 2021. Whereas Gwen Blake was first employed by Watchon Hills Regional High School in 2011. And whereas she has since utilized her professional skills in crisis counseling for students, families, and faculty during her tenure at Watchon Hills. And whereas she has presented to students on social and emotional wellness in health classes and provided a number of educational evening programs for parents in the community. And whereas she participated in the WHRHS Municipal Alliance, county staff meetings, Challenge Day, and Week of Respect. And whereas she served as the co-leader of the Intervention and Referral Team, a member of the Crisis Response Team, and made regular contributions to the Healthy Edge Program. And whereas she has remained a colleague and a friend to the WHRH staff and has decided to retire. Now therefore be it resolved that the Watchon Hills Regional Board of Education extends its heartfelt gratitude for Gwen Blake's 10 years of service and devotion to our school and wishes her a healthy and happy retirement to pursue her passions, travel, and whatever adventures lie ahead. So congratulations Gwen, and we are going to miss you. Next, we have Erin Hodge. This proclamation regarding Erin Hodge shall be read at the public meeting of the Watchon Hills Regional High School Board of Education on June 1st, 2021. Whereas Erin Hodge was first employed by Watchon Hills Regional High School in September 2006 after teaching four years in Michigan. And whereas he has been noted for his dedication to his students in his social studies classes, including United States and World History, as well as the numerous elective courses he taught enthusiastically engaging with his students to expand their horizons and become active citizens and to think critically about current issues. And whereas his involvement in extracurricular activities, serving as advisor for many clubs and competitions, including Junior Statement of America and the Economics Challenge. And whereas he has demonstrated dedication to the Social Studies Department, which included interacting with colleagues and sharing thoughtful ideas during department meeting discussions, in addition to working with others in cross-disciplinary endeavors in professional learning communities, as well as being involved with using the New Jersey Learning Standards into the curriculum. And whereas he brought his pleasant demeanor and positivity every day to the classroom and school environment. His motivation to learn from others, as well as through coursework and outside studies at universities, including his master's in educational administration. And whereas, after bringing unique perspectives to events in history and in helping his students reach their highest potential, he has decided to retire. Now therefore be it resolved that the Watchon Hills Regional Board of Education extends its heartfelt gratitude for Erin Hodge's 15 years of service and devotion to our school and wishes him a healthy and happy retirement to pursue his passions, travel, and whatever adventures lie ahead. Congratulations Erin, thank you. Next, we have, and would you like to say her name? Janet Trontefulu. This proclamation regarding Janet Trontefulu shall be read at the public meeting of the Watchon Hills Regional High School Board of Education on June 1st, 2021. Whereas Janet Trontefulu first joined Watchon Hills Regional High School in May 2005 as a substitute teacher and substitute secretary, and in April 2006 as a substitute bus driver. And whereas she became the district's transportation coordinator in August 2006 and has served her school district in that capacity for 15 years. And whereas she has been valued, a valued and loved member of the WHRHS community who is known for her punctuality, organization, reliability, and attention to detail. And whereas she has been the driving force behind the safe and efficient transportation of over 2,000 students each year. And whereas her strong collaborative efforts with the sending school districts, bus contractors, bus drivers, private schools and parents, various educational service commissions, athletic department, co-curricular supervisors, were critical in establishing safe and efficient student transportation in all areas. And whereas she is known as a loyal member of the school's business office team that always stresses safety of the students and physical responsibility. And whereas her strong chance to transportation knowledge dedication and warm personality will be missed by many. Now therefore be it resolved that the Watchon Hills Regional High School Board of Education extends its heartfelt gratitude for Janet Trontefulu for her 16 years of service and devotion to our school and wishes her a happy and healthy retirement to pursue her passions, travel, and whatever adventures lie ahead. Thank you very much Janet. Okay, so now we have come to our three retirees who are with us. So the first person I would like to call up to the lectern is Mr. Coyote. This proclamation regarding Joseph Coyote shall be read at the public meeting of the Watchon Hills Regional High School Board of Education on June 1st, 2021. Whereas Joseph Coyote began at the Watchon Hills Regional High School in 2009 with the School Security and Safety Staff. And whereas he brought his law enforcement experience, his concerns for school security and the lives of teenagers, cooperative nature, and ready sense of humor to the Watchon Hills community as a security aide. And whereas he has endeared himself to our community for his knowledge of all students, willingness to extend a hand to support all in need, and stability to ensure the safety of all staff members of a learning community. And whereas he has always been a strong supporter of athletics, giving up his time to attend many events to cultivate his relationships with our students, coaches, and parent. And whereas he has decided to retire after faithfully serving our students, staff, and parent. Now therefore be it resolved that the Watchon Hills Regional High School Board of Education extends its heartfelt gratitude for Joseph Coyote's 12 years of service and devotion to our school and wishes him a healthy and happy retirement to pursue his passions, travel, and whatever adventures lie ahead. Mr. Coyote, I know that I'm going to be seeing you in the hallway as I'm doing my routes around the building. You treat every student as if they were your own, and I enjoyed talking to you about your own children, and now they are successful in their careers, so it's nice that they're finally letting you retire. So you can enjoy some time, but you have been a tremendous asset to our school community, and I know the students are going to miss you as well. So we wish you all the best. And because we normally have a cake for the retirees, but given COVID and all of that, we didn't do that this year, but our culinary arts students made a little treat of cookies for each of the retirees here tonight. And if you would like to say a few words, Mr. Coyote, and I'll bring you to our resolution. Okay, next we have Suzanne Fenstemaker. Please, on down. So Suzanne Fenstemaker is going to be a tremendous loss for our science department. Actually, our two retirees are really a service foundation for that department. And they, I think when I first came to the district, for lack of a better term, you know, I think the two of you have been legends in the, in the science department, in a very positive way to the students and to the staff. So now I'll read the proclamations for each of you. This proclamation regarding Suzanne Fenstemaker shall be read at the public meeting of the Watchon Hills Regional High School Board of Education on June 1st, 2021. Whereas Suzanne Fenstemaker was first employed by Watchon Hills Regional High School in September 2001. And whereas she has been noted for her passion for science and in particular biology, and for her boundless patience and strong desire for personal growth. And whereas because of her expertise as a learner, her knowledge of biology, and her ability to motivate all levels of students, she has been invaluable to the school as a whole. And whereas she is a lifelong learner who's above and beyond the call of duty sacrifice of her personal time for her students' needs, prepared them for the challenges of life and the highest levels of post-secondary academics. And whereas she has been a stalwart in the science department for 20 years. And whereas, after an outstanding career as a teacher, who inspired all with her love of learning and perpetual search for a better lesson, she has decided to retire. Now therefore be it resolved that the Watchon Hills Regional Board of Education extends its heartfelt gratitude for Suzanne Fenstemaker's 20 years of service and devotion to our school and wishes her a healthy and happy retirement to pursue her passions, travel, and whatever adventures lie ahead. Yeah, we're tremendously appreciative of not only your 20 years of service, but this last year probably seems like it was 19 of your 20 years of service. And your passion for the subject is evident to everyone around you, including your students, and you're going to be leaving very difficult shoes for somebody to go. Linda, come on up.
I think you may have been one of the first teachers I've met when I've been here. Probably because you're at the school as much as our maintenance staff and anyone else. And so I think you were probably in your classroom physically setting up that summer when I was walking around, but I remember one of, I think, the first conversations I had with the teacher, I was likely to give. And you were very welcoming and warm and very enthusiastic about your, your subject and the students, and that has shown, you know, through this year as well, which was not an easy year to, to maintain that. This proclamation regarding Carol Landa shall be read at the public meeting of the Watchon Hills Regional High School Board of Education on June 1st, 2021. Whereas Carol Landa was first employed by Watchon Hills Regional High School in September 2003. And whereas she has been noted for her passion for science and in particular biology, and for her boundless patience and strong desire for personal growth. Whereas because of her expertise as a learner, her knowledge of biology, and her ability to motivate all of those students, she has been invaluable to the school as a whole. And whereas she is a lifelong learner who's above and beyond the call of duty sacrifice of her personal time for her students' needs, prepared them for the challenges of life and the highest levels of post-secondary academics. And whereas she has been a stalwart in the science department for 18 years. Whereas after an outstanding career as a teacher who inspired all with her love of learning and perpetual search for a better lesson, she has decided to retire. Now therefore be it resolved that the Watchon Hills Regional High School Board of Education extends its heartfelt gratitude for Carol Landa's 18 years of service and devotion to our school and wishes her a healthy and happy retirement to pursue her passions, travel, and whatever adventures lie ahead. Thank you Carol, we wish you all the best. So people are certainly wanting to watch us though. And every time we acknowledge our retirees, I think we're reminded of the impact that you have had on the students here, and I hope that you realize that and remember that. Because, you know, it's certainly something that you may not always be aware of until later on, and really you have touched so many lives, and we really appreciate all of your service to the school, and we wish you all the best. And sleeping in September and traveling in September doing all of the things that you generally can't do.
Okay, so that concludes our retiring presentation.
Thank you very much, Dr. Jewitt, and on behalf of the board, thank you for your many years of service and commitment to the school. We're very proud of you. Now we'll move to the strategic plan update.
Okay, so we have a number of the members of our strategic plan team, the chairs of our team, that are, we're going to keep this somewhat brief. So for the board members, in your folders, you have, I gave you a printout that is the entire strategic plan. So if you recall back in, like, it was December, when we presented the goals and the objectives. And so I guess we shared the mission, the goals, and the objectives, these statements. So that's really the foundational framework of the strategic plan, and since that time, the action plans have been developed for achieving each of the objectives outlined in your plan. And I shouldn't be able to share my student name, correct? So what I've included in your four folders is a very comprehensive document. So you are not expected to read it all and digest it all right now. It's all actually available on our website as well, but I wanted to give that to you so that you have it to refer to. So what you were presented back in December was this document here, which is on our strategic plan page of our website. So these are our goals and our objectives. Since then, and our guiding principles. Since then, the action teams developed action plans for achievement of the goals and objectives. And we are not going to go through all of those action items tonight, because there are a lot of them. Because they really spent a lot of time outlining what the action plan would be for achievement of the objectives. What we want to use tonight for it is to just briefly show you the strategic plan dashboard on the website that you can visit, that anyone can visit anytime they want, that contains all this information, so that you're familiar with that. And each of the action team chairs, they're just going to speak, they're going to pick one of their action plans that is going to, that has a start date, implementation date of July 2021, with something that's going to be coming up that the board can expect to hear more about, and they're going to speak on that. And then after this meeting, you're welcome to continue to look through this, you know, well, these were, everything that's in the strategic plan will obviously be spoken about at some level of the board, whether it's full board or a board committee. But it's obviously a lot of information right now. And then the other piece that we're going to talk about tonight is the additional component that was also completed since December, which is the portrait of a graduate. And that is very closely linked to our ESLRs, our expected school-wide learning results that were developed as part of our prior strategic plan. That's what we're going to, let's give you a little preview of tonight. So the strategic plan dashboard is something new for this strategic plan. For our prior plan, our 2015 to 2020 plan, we utilized Google Docs to to monitor and document our progress on the plan. So this is a little bit more robust platform to track our progress. And there will be an additional tab on this that actually has indicators of progress and how we're going to, what metrics we're going to use to measure progress. That's the next piece that we still have to complete. So we're looking at finalizing what we will actually be using, what quantitative and qualitative data we will use to determine our progress on meeting the school. But if you look right now on the homepage of this, and again, this is all on our district website on the strategic plan page, you have our, our mission and our guiding principles. And then this is what you actually have a printout of, and anyone who wants to see this comprehensively, there's a way to print it as a PDF and you'll see everything, but if you notice, here's our first goal. These are the objectives for goal one, so that all of this you've seen before, this was on December. So for goal one, these are our action items for achievement of, I'm sorry, for objective one. These are the action items that will be carried out to achieve the first objective. And if you click on this I over here, what this does is it gives you the date, the expected date to carry out that action item, as well as whose responsible. And it lists that for every single action item. So you can see that this one is something that will be happening right away. And is expected to be completed next year, that particular step. So that is on here for all of these action items. So what I'm going to do, and so that way you'll get a little sampling of an objective and the action plans for each goal. And I'm going to ask the action team co-chairs just to speak briefly about one of the action plans. So I believe for goal one, we have Mr. Sabino and Mrs. Tobin. So I'm going to call them up to speak briefly about this. And Mr. Sabino is our Director of School Counseling, and Mr. Tobin is one of our assistant principals.
Good evening.
Yeah, turn it off.
Good evening, everyone. Good to see the board this evening and everybody else from the community here tonight. Happy to be first time live in person at a board meeting so far since I've come on board, so thanks for having me here. So we're here, Mr. Tobin and I, to discuss, as Dr. Jewitt mentioned, some of the items that were so crucial to the goal that we set for the next strategic plan. So the one item we really want to highlight, like Dr. Jewitt mentioned, we'll kind of start off right, right, right here from the lie going forward, is the social-emotional goal that's tied to the school climate survey. So I know prior to my coming on board here, there's been discussion about having some additional survey and get some some ideas of the school climate at large here. But this should provide us an opportunity to do so, and it's really tied, tied well to social-emotional goals, but also honestly, more broadly, this will also tie into some metrics for, for the other goals that should be tied as well. So with the support of the administration board, we have partnered with Rutgers and the School Climate Transformation Project to deliver this instrument that's utilized by a number of districts throughout, see? We're in the midst of administering to all stakeholders, actually, now, we're actually not.
And Mr. Sabino, I'm going to interrupt you one second, just to, so they can cross reference. I believe we're talking about objective 1.6, correct?
Correct.
That means conduct self-assessment.
Yes, I can't see that fully from my angle, but yes, I disagree with that. So, so the, the survey for the School Climate Transformation Project will be administered to all stakeholders. Students, parents, families, faculty. And right now, we're actually in the process of administering it to the students, and it will be administered to faculty as well the next week, and we can have, and then to the parents of the community. The results from this, the results of the survey will allow us to gauge actual items to prioritize, and also again, ties it to the social-emotional goals. And also a large range of impact on peer support that we provide to students. Certainly we're in the midst of, it's coming out of the pandemic here, so there'll be a lot of need that we anticipate will continue to fall, carry into the fall and into the next five years. But this will allow us to get some real-time data on the needs of the students, from the, from both the students, from the faculty, as well as from the parents of the community. Rutgers staff will provide opportunity to meet with us over the summer to see the initial findings, and then we'll have to make some decisions when, when to follow up with a follow-up survey, whether that be the fall or the spring. And the tie to this will be professional development and support for staff, based on, again, the results of the survey. If anybody has any questions about the Rutgers survey or larger social-emotional goals of the district, we'll figure it out in the future on myself. Anybody want to add? Anybody have any questions, feel free to let us know. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Just a point of clarification upon the Rutgers survey. Here in the scroll talks about the focus on students, but that survey is actually a comprehensive survey for not only students, faculty, but also the community. Is that correct?
That's correct, and it will also tie to, again, not only for what we look to do for peers, of course, for the students, both in the classroom and outside the classroom, but also for the faculty, of the parents as well, so we know what type of programming to target for parents during meeting events or during the school year, as well as for professional development. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any examples of what the community will be asked? Major themes or the primarily academic, social, or?
It covers the range to answer that more directly, but I also have, I mean, it's, it's not a lengthy survey, and actually the board should have access to the full questions and the samples that we, that we already, as well as the community. We actually, Principal Verer sent this out to the, to the, to the parents and the community with a sample of the survey as well, so. First question is to give you, for instance, and I feel safer. And then it really goes in from there into the deeper questions about how students are doing overall, obviously socially, emotionally, and also academically. The parents having me up, the parents want to ask you to do the goal one survey, and that's you.
I can get, I can send the copy of this to the board.
Other questions about? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, goal two, I'm going to call up Mr. Seer Fosso, our Assistant Principal, and Mr. Reamer, our Director of Special Services. And this goal centered on helping our students pursue personalized educational goals in and beyond the classroom. To follow up on goal one, we're going to highlight, next 2.1. It does talk about ensuring that individual student needs are met for very So again, through the data that we'll be collecting, the social-emotional survey, the project, also just seeing what we've put through last year. We wanted to highlight some of the activities that we put together. So we're going to be objective focused on supporting all the students' individual needs with a focus on study groups, organizational skills, geared academic support programs.
I mean, the only, what we can add on that is, obviously, the students rely heavily on things that are required in place, for example, housing services, features that are available for extra support, extra, that are help. This is taking it a step further to the next way, where we're actually getting more students involved with regard to peer mentoring, like programs, study groups that are more organized, a place where students can go in addition to some of the support that's been offered.
One of the things I'd just like to point out, and to actually thank the board and the administration for, because we had a discussion about a year ago of whether to be moving forward with the strategic plan process or not, given pandemic and the disruption to our, our school year. And I think that this goal and these objectives speak exactly to how the strategic plan has helped us put in place structures and steps to address some of the needs that have arisen as a result of this very untraditional year. And while SBL was a focus for us before the pandemic, before it actually became a focus for the state, you know, this was something that came up in our last strategic plan, I think that certainly some of these action items grew out of the conversations this year of the additional supports that we realized students needed. So I, I really do want to commend the board for moving forward with this and giving your support to this, because it has helped us really formalize some of the essential supports that our students and our staff is going to be moving forward.
Any board members have any questions or comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Right, goal three, that is Mr. Maluso, our Director of Information Technology and Sister Blackford, one of our assistant principals.
So moving to see the, on objective 3.3, and the focus of this objective here, building an innovation team of teachers and staff. So over the past year, as Mr. Jewitt just mentioned, we've learned a lot about hybrid learning, distant learning, and our teachers are fantastic, and we could form a team of these teachers and share some of these innovative ideas that they use every day in their classroom, the technology they incorporated over the past year and a half and beyond that, and their many years of teaching experiences. And with the team's focus and goal is to inspire teachers to try something new, get out of their comfort zone, explore, research, and build upon that in a formal structure where they're in their own department or across department, and the entire staff as well. Blackford?
Another focus of objective 3.3 is also to incorporate design thinking into our coursework and work. Design thinking is a process-oriented design strategy that really starts with the premise of creativity as a skill that can be oriented, it's not specifically a trade like you or you have already known, but it's a skill that can be sculpted and plotted. In many ways, it's similar to the engineering process or the time process, or even the scientific method. It's a structured way of thinking for problems that works nicely in project-based learning. We believe the focus on the creativity and idea generation will be powerful and exciting.
Thank you. I can answer your questions.
And for the goal number four, we have Stella, our Director of Critical Instruction, and Mr. Rivera, our Principal.
Thank you very much, sir. We're here talking about objective for both for the diversity, equity, inclusion. As you know, previously, could you comment that was part of the
Uh, the idea was wrong to be into the strategic plan, but going into this five year plan is discussing the losing points. I have to speak as over singular goal. Obviously, we spent a lot of time and effort and resources into this and are continuing to announce your teaching plan. So one of the things that we're going to talk about today is, um, obviously there's a lot in there. We're going to just mention objective 4.4 is partnering with our constituent districts. Um, and what this is going to talk to is really taking a look at our student handbook and making sure that it representative of what was going on in current times and what is our, or what we're seeing as a staff and then as a, and for the student. This came up from a couple of different ways, whether it be academic council or meetings with our students in their different collection organization that we want to revise is to make it more representative of what is going on in our school. So our team VPs that I've already spoken, we're going to sit down this summer and really dive into our student handbook and make sure that it's very representative of what's going on and how to be more reflective of the times and the things that we are seeing currently in our district. Stellman?
Just wanted to choose this note to talk about the crazy, we discussed the director's survey in light of our meetings. We talked about changing something else that might not have tried to do itself. So that's where you saw that. I know how that happens from time to time and all that expectations. And the last thing that I wanted to say, you know, is I wanted to reiterate the fact that she was said about the board and the board's energy through the pandemic. And I'm glad that Ms. Schemen came back because she was very instrumental in her becoming a concert master and helping all different wins and run up to come together. And we are very proud of this plan. And Bob really knows because he knows by you know, secure the phone and Peter, we didn't even know what a plan was. And so now for us to move to thinking about analytics and data and the members of our team were really excited about the fact that we're going to set your goal. So thank you to all of you. I would thank everybody to come here and every month as we had more children, students, adolescents in our building, the energy is pressing probably. So thank you for your leadership.
Thank you. And then, uh, Ms. Schemen is going to speak to the open.
Any board members have questions or comments?
If you go back to our strategic plan page, we have.
The portrait of a graduate is new strategic plan, so wanting more expected schoolwide learning results that were developed in 2015. This is the mission statement is a fully developed description of our district work. And we have a school motto that aligns in succinct statement of encourage, power, explore, excel. Our portrait of a graduate works hand in hand with the ESLR. So if you look at the mission statement, it's on the, it's actually on the home page of the community.
Oh, that's right. It's on the.
There's a mission statement. You can see the underlined words that make up our motto of encourage, power, explore, excel. So I just wanted to use that analogy to explain the ESLR and portrait of a graduate validation here. But now I'll ask if you don't mind, actually starting with the ESLR page? So the expected schoolwide, um, learning result. During the last strategic plan, the district normalized the expected schoolwide learning result. There's six categories with several elements. Category. There's fully expanded and detailed description of the district's goals for each graduate of Wharton. See, that's a very comprehensive faculty. And as she has time, you can review this category to the same as the, uh, for plan was 2015. The portrait of a graduate is like the motto was to the mission, the portrait of a graduate is things captured by the expected schoolwide learning result. The portrait of a graduate will include, uh, will include a visual representation that will be provided by the student. I will try to be brief and easily identify a reminder of the district's goals for all of Wharton's program.
Any questions or comments on the schedule?
So that's what we can plan for the strategic plan update tonight and we heard as we go through it, we'll certainly will be providing any more updates and through the committee meetings, a lot of those action rates will be part of those committee meetings. One other note related to that related, I think part of the reason we're getting the feedback, um, in the speakers is if everyone used their microphone when they're not speaking.
Not still there.
There's a DJ in the background up here.
Uh, so thank you, Dr. Jewett. Uh, is there any of our honored retirees that's still here that's certainly welcome to the I apologize if I did mention that in advance. Uh, we'll move on to committee reports and back to others.
Before we move on from the strategic plan, I just wanted to, um, you know, highlight one more time, uh, the the public facing accountability on this plan and the dashboard itself, because when, you know, as we've looked at the dashboard, uh, you know, members of the community will be able to come in and see the progress that we're making for the strategic plan. So it's not just the document we're working on, but you know, the, the progress that's being made uh, provides a level of transparency and accountability to the community for what we are promising to deliver on behalf of our students. I think that's a, uh, a, an important addition, uh, to this particular, uh, process. Um, as well as I think that the, you know, the school culture and climate survey uh, is also going to be an important addition because that will also be reported as part of the, um, strategic plan progress report. So again, just another, another way that, uh, the community can hold us accountable to what we're promising we're going to do on their behalf.
And since you have the microphone, move to our education.
And those members of the leadership team. And again, if you would be welcome to.
So the education committee met on May 24th, uh, and we had a number of talk, the topics that we moved through that are in uh, the, the minutes from the meeting, but just real briefly, uh, we talked about the, uh, our next board meeting, there will be a presentation um, of a, uh, of, of basically the progress that we've been making, um, toward the current strategic planner, as we change, turn the page to the new strategic plan, where we'll be getting an updates on the progress from uh, the district administrators that tie to the four strategic plan goals. Uh, but here we will be hearing from four groups of students and teachers, uh, that will be talking about their experiences this year aligning to those though actual projects that they've done, um, that are consistent with the goals of the strategic plan. Uh, so that will be for our June 15th presentation. Uh, we also spoke about the college acceptance. We're in the middle of collecting all the data with, uh, over 300 responses we've received so far. Uh, we know that 85% of our students are attending four year colleges and universities and we'll have a much more robust, uh, update, uh, regarding the college acceptances once we come back in the fall. We got our fall report. Uh, we also discussed, uh, summer and fall academic uh, and social emotional learning support, uh, some of which you heard, uh, is incorporated into our strategic plan. Uh, and, and we'll have much more to report on once the plan is finalized, but they're looking at a variety of options for summer enrichment or summer academic support, uh, sharing in-person opportunities for credit recovery. Um, and also looking at virtual means to support some of those issues as well. Uh, they're also looking at, uh, creative ways we can bring our students back into the building this summer who have been a hundred percent remote since March of 2020, uh, including multiple activities to ease their transition back into September. Uh, and we're also, uh, as we've discussed, uh, prior to this, looking at what additional academic and social emotional learning supports we need to implement in the fall as schools begin so that we have enough support in place for the students that will need it. Um, as you may or may not know, this year we, uh, we, we really surged support for a lot of the students that needed it. Regardless of their status, regardless of whether they had an IP or a 504, uh, if a student needed support, they got support. Uh, and we just want to make sure that as we transition into the new year, that we are providing that same level of support. Um, as we begin to find our way to whatever this new reality is that we're going to be operating in the fall. Uh, we also talked about, uh, there was a discussion about the, uh, setting up, uh, permanent lights outside of the area where the stage is currently, which is also, uh, the, the band field. Uh, and they've looked at actually purchasing those lights, but they're not going to be able to do it for this particular year. So instead, uh, we're going to be running some lights to go out into that space, uh, almost like an experiment to see whether we're not the idea of lighting that field uh, over the long term makes the most sense. Successful with the fall, then they'll be able to, uh, install permanent lighting in the future. Uh, we also had some curriculum updates, uh, regarding, uh, both social studies and health. They've been coordinating with the sending district middle school teachers on, uh, social studies to really follow up on the idea of how we can align social studies skill. Uh, the goal here is that, uh, while we may not necessarily align curriculum, uh, that we can at least align skill that we are expecting from our students, uh, as they're working their way toward, uh, the high school. And then since we moved, uh, the ninth grade health class to the first quarter, uh, we found a great way of, uh, making connections between students from all four sending districts. Uh, and their health teachers have committed to providing SEL support for ninth graders as they tradition, transition into Washon Hills, uh, so that they continue to build their relationships. Uh, and then also working on developing a shared vision and vocabulary amongst our students, uh, creating our peer leaders and sports leaders and band captains and the adults in the learning community, uh, you know, bringing them together in a unified way uh, to support the needs of our students. And then our students will learn how to reach uh, and help each other through their own leadership potential, uh, as they understand that everyone can play a role in further cultivating the empathetic culture that we strive to create here, uh, at Washon Hills. Uh, the last item that we talked about, uh, was one that we touched on at our last board meeting and Dr. Chabelski, uh, generously brought that over to the education committee, uh, where we had a discussion regarding religious holidays uh, and some correspondence that we received from members of our community. Uh, and that led us to a broader conversation of our current calendar and our current approach to holidays in general. Um, and as a result of that, we were looking at, uh, how Milburn, uh, had approached, uh, similar issues on their uh, calendar and how they looked to, uh, adjust the comp, the, the calendar and accommodate additional cultural and religious celebrations in which many of their community members participate. Uh, one of the things that Milburn did was to conduct the study to gauge absences on various holidays, utilizing the information to determine when the closed school districts in particular. Uh, and that was generally with, there was over 50% of the population celebrating a particular holiday. But additionally, they went further by not really indicating that the district was closed for a holiday, but just that the district was closed. Um, and on our current calendar, most of the district closing is district is closed, with the exception, right now, I think of two holidays in September. Um, so that got us thinking, maybe we don't, maybe we should just be indicating when our building is going to be closed. And then at the same time, uh, looking at some things that we need to do, like surveying our own community to determine what are the, the holidays that are being celebrated, uh, what impacts might they have on, um, both the high school, but also even coordinating, doing that survey with our sending districts, so that we can have a comprehensive approach to how we address the holidays, because after all, we can't just close the school in disregard what's happening in sending districts. So the idea would be that we will do a, a similar survey, uh, in the fall of 2021, hopefully in collaboration with our sending districts to garner the feedback in considering potential adjustments to our calendar. Uh, we're also going to look to edit the language on the calendar to not indicate specific religious holidays, but to, uh, i- indicate a district closure. Um, and then finally, we will formally communicate our current practice and encourage students to inform teachers of cultural, religious and other obligations that are appropriate reasons for extensions on assignments by adding such language to our student handbook. As well as then looking at, even if the building isn't closed, uh, but there are significant holidays that are being held, uh, encouraging, you know, through the use of the calendar, uh, that's significant events for, that we would be hosting at the building would not interfere with some of those other holidays. So that we're not going to put, uh, we're not going to schedule a, a major performance on, on top of a, uh, important observed holiday that impacts a, you know, important community within our community, but it's not large enough where we are closing the building. So we're trying to get a better understanding of what all of the issues are. Um, the survey will certainly inform that. And then from that, develop the information in our student handbook, be able to communicate that out to the rest of the community and also educate our own staff members on, uh, the calendar in such a way so that they can avoid, uh, scheduling items on sensitive topic. So, uh, that was the end of our meeting and that is the conclusion of my report. I will provide opportunity for any of our committee members to comment, uh, before we take questions.
I wrote the original policy, yeah, on holidays for Milburn, two years ago, early 2000s. I helped craft that survey. One of the things we also looked at was not just moving forward, but we wanted to get why to get those certain holidays beforehand. And the reasons, I just, I need to look into that. That wasn't just because of students, it was because of teacher absence. It's all had some issues. Certain holidays, certain events where we, we kill future accidents, create extreme with regards to substance. So you just want to be sensitive with that. That's a great strain on.
Great one. Any other question?
Well, I, sorry that I could not attend the meeting, but I saw the petition with summit. And there are two holidays that have been suggested for Eve and Diwali. Each of these two festivals are celebrated by more than one billion people in the world, each of them. And actually Diwali is celebrated even in White House. So in several districts here in New Jersey, they actually close the school. They have the holiday and it is in the calendar. It is example is Edison. Note they have, you can see the calendar this year, next year, they clearly mark this holiday. So quite a few community members opposed me also that why not we have a holiday here, we have, we have a holiday for Christians, for Jewish, why not for Muslim community, why not for Hindu community? Now, Diwali is not only celebrated by Hindu, Hindu, the dance, the sing, the Buddhist, you know, more than a billion. So if we have a strategic goal of inclusivity, diversity, I see no reason to specify that we have the holiday for this particular occasion that we have, everybody would feel as negative because after all, school is run by taxpayers and fairly large amount of taxes are given by these communities who are requesting these holidays. That's the comment I have.
And I think that's exactly the reason why we want to do this survey with community to get our community's feedback to see what we need to do and what is appropriate, uh, in the needs of our community. In, in reference to the Edison calendar, they, you know, the Edison calendar, they are closed for Diwali. But we're closed for Diwali as well this year, uh, because it's falling on the time period where schools may close for the traditional um, teacher recess, so for the NJEA conference. So it happens to fall on that same calendar. So, you know, theoretically we're closed, um, so that students would be able to celebrate that. But more importantly, I think we need more information and then we can make an informed decision, create an appropriate calendar to feedback from the community. And then make sure that we're addressing not only as it relates to the two holidays that were brought up by the petitions, but that we're being comprehensive and looking at, are there other holidays that might be impacted, uh, through the rest of the community so that we can do this in one broad strategic approach instead of, okay, we'll address these two holidays now and then next time there will be two more holidays from somebody else. We really want to try to get it right, particularly as it relates to. We really want to try to get it right, particularly as it relates to our commitment to diversity equity.
Yeah, that's fine, but to address this point of reason, if you see the calendar for the next year, it's going up to what it's called. It explicitly mentioned that it, there's no, it is not coinciding with any other event. So it's so happy that this year it's coinciding. The last year, it was holiday twenty also there, it's a holiday separately. And it's written there, you know.
It's also another category, careful of what you wish for. There were well over a hundred holidays that are recognized by even state of the church or the federal government. So what I'm hearing, there is the potential, I'm not saying I'm order against it, but taking every holiday, making that a potential day off, if there's at least one person in the district who recognizes or acknowledges. I'm not saying I have an issue with that. But that's the goal, that's going to create a major problem. So we need to be very sensitive, as Bob is saying, that sets some sort of realistic expectations are perhaps to measure what the numbers are with respect to observance. Because if it's one person, don't want to shut down education. Not that I have an issue with that, that others may have. Just have to be very careful. Edison, great example. However, they're an outlier with regard to their student population. And if we're going to use that as the example, that's going to actually create a problem. Because there are other districts throughout New Jersey, throughout the United States, that are heavily concentrated with respect to certain groups. And if we say that this group observes this, does there ninety-two percent are certain groupless, just say, well, we should do that too? Where we have zero percent, does that really make sense? Or maybe it should, because now we want to be inclusive of our brothers and sisters throughout the United States and observe their record, even though it may not apply to ours, but maybe. Yeah, I'm not against it, but let's just be careful of what we wish for.
No, I'm sure you like, I just resigned by four hundred people. And I don't like, I don't want to know any of that. There are obviously seven hundred more people. But it's not only one person. Fairly large number of, you know, going numbers.
Again, that's not the issue. The issue is what that number is. So probably our, we're the elected officials in this district, determining what the criteria is. Obviously, at ninety-eight percent of our people, then we know that makes sense. But at some point, what is that percentage? And that's what we got to be careful, that's what our rule is. Where did that cut off?
The other question? Just a question, one. Bobby, I had a notation about generally if over fifty percent, I don't know if you or Michael have any sort of insight as to where that number came from? And how hard and fast was that?
I can tell you, because I'm the one who shared that, just because then it's not hard and fast. It was just to give an idea of what, you know, what they generally looked at. But Michael might have more information, but don't, I don't, I'm not quoting that that's the exact number. They just were saying that they had a, they determined a threshold and make you that decision. But Michael might have some more to say on that.
I do, but I had a lot of comments for what that number came from. But again, they did, we did do a study of the district versus survey they run out. And surveys in general, got to be very careful, because the way you craft the survey really weak. That's his whole thing, why surveys are bad. We hear it all the time, let's think of survey, let's think of survey. But the way you ask the question, really create the answers. That's why I'm not a huge fan of the surveys. Even when you look at questions that appear to be very binary, you can still create the way you slam the session, slam the decision. And so our original issue with Milburn, bringing up what the teachers were important, that's what created the holiday, certainly with regard to Jewish holiday. That was the first step, it was originally going back about thirty years, there were no Jewish holidays. So most districts, they weren't, they weren't days off. And if you had the absence, excuse absence. Do it here. And what was found, that there are a lot of teachers that were absent those days, and create a big scheduler. So that's, that's what created the first move going to the holiday. And then, you know, there were that many more students that were in Jewish persuasion, and that's stopped. And about fifteen years ago, we saw the town and the big Asian Indian community, and we were addressing those as well. With the surveys, then the numbers were lower, I don't know where it is now. That's five plus years. But I certainly know that the composition of the district has changed dramatically over the last twenty years, that they think they're recognizing more the holiday. And, you know, at some point, you just put a number down, see where it is, you know. Just kind of get a sense of what makes, that two percent seems small, all of a sudden you have one, two, twenty, twenty-five percent. It's a significant part of the population.
And I think that's one of the things that we addressed when we talked about it in education committee. It was, I think the number from Milburn was kind of a guide. It wasn't, okay, that's the number that's going to be. What we talked about, Michael, was kind of to your, to your point, when you, when we do get the information back from the community, you know, significant. And trying to identify what is significant as it relates to our student population, and to your point, or our teaching population, to the degree that there would, you know, there would be a, where we make the most sense to make sure that, that building would be closed at that point in time. So I think that, you know, like anything, there's, there's nuance. And I think that we're going to have to make sure as we move forward with this, that we are thoughtful, that we're listening to the community, and then become forward with the best plan that will make the most sense, balancing the needs of the community with the needs of us.
And we were very conscious, which I know this quote, turns out that if there was an observation of a holiday that, again, there were no exam, there was no homework, and that expectation, and that more importantly, that other students would have looked down upon those people, those children who did an intense quality. Because that was an issue as well. Educate everybody about why these days were important. I don't know, I forget the good announcements at the point. This was a, that wasn't a negative connotation of, so and so is not here today because there's very such and such, that was very important as well, because you didn't want there to be a stigma. Twenty-five kids in class are absent from observation, that there wasn't a stigma attached to those individuals, it's really safeguard the education for those people, to make sure that they have access to whatever was being, what that school would provide opportunities for them. That was important.
Thanks. Second question, and I don't know if Dr. Jewer or Mr. Morrison wants to address this, just to give a realistic timetable in terms of what the public can expect, given that calendars are coordinated with tools that send to us ahead of time, and calendars that voted upon, just to be set realistically. Sure, well, I think that the, you know, the current calendar for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year, you know, has been set not only by Watchon Hills, but also our sending districts. So, you know, what we will be looking to do is to do a survey, you know, out in the community in the fall, preferably in coordination with our sending districts, with the idea we could then get the information back, look at it collectively, see how that may impact the calendar for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year, and then make the adjustments to, you know, ideally fall into line in that particular time, as well as, you know, Mr. Marburg alluded to, making sure we also develop the appropriate training support for the rest of the staff, to ensure that even if the building is open and there happens to be a significant holiday for some members of the community that comes into place, that we are not giving tests, we're not putting on major events, we're not putting on the spring musical so that it would conflict with the student's ability to participate. Being sensitive, that we don't want students to be stigmatized in any way, shape, or form, regardless of the strategies.
Thank you. So what my question to you, will we be, will we be accepting that?
To our, to the students and parents of our people and teachers? Any other comments or questions? Thank you, Mr. Morrison. We'll move on to personnel report.
The Personnel Committee on May twenty-fourth, we were able to discuss the C items that are on agenda for our next meeting, we did them, we also were able to discuss.
I know, so there are no comments or questions. We'll move on to our first public comment period, which is limited to agenda items for this meeting only. The second public comment period will be open to any topic. All comments are limited to five minutes. Although comments regarding items not on the agenda are typically entertained at that second comment period, I'll take the prerogative to include any comments on either the strategic plan update or any of the committee reports that you just heard from this first public commentary period as well. So if you have a comment, please step up and identify your name and the town that you're from.
Hello. My name is Jeanne Cutel. Of course, I did with many of you through phone and email. Hello, so nice to participate with you. Um, thank you for the discussion tonight about the petition that we put forward to the community. And for the benefit of those who did not receive the petition, I just want to give a quick synopsis. It was a petition signed by over three hundred people. And it was created, it was the Muslim Hindu and Jewish Coalition. I think it's interesting, as we talk about surveys and how we're going to move forward, you know, there are people that are signatories to this petition that is requesting that the Eid and Diwali holidays be days off for the school and staff. There are signatories to this petition and have no direct benefit to themselves. There's the Jewish community on this, they already have school holidays. Why are they signatories to this comment, to this petition? We have Christian neighbors, agnostic neighbors. Why aren't they signatories to this petition? I was asked the question, and you sort of brought this up, are we opening a Pandora's box? And I said, when someone said to me, what if this community, that community, I have children that go to the public schools? And my answer is, they would be richer for it to learn about what is Yom Kippur, what is Rosh Hashanah, all of these we don't celebrate. But we live in a global society. And I hope we're, we're, we're teaching our kids to be global leaders at Watchon Hills. I want people to look at our graduates and say, wow. Wow, you're a global citizen, you're not clueless to what's going on around you. Sir, you said these spaces, these holidays are celebrated by billions. I can speak about Islam, it's the second largest religion in the world and the fastest growing in the United States. If you're not Muslim, you should know about Islam. And you should want your child, your neighbor to know about it too. And that's why these holidays are important. It's not just about celebrating. It's what do we want our children to be? And how do we want them to interact with people that are different than them? That's why diversity and inclusion and equity is important. It's not just about the people who are in the minority. It's about us learning about them and how our community benefits from that. So I just wanted the community to be aware of what the petition was, because I know it's sent to you, but they not, they might not be aware of what it was for. And it aligned with our strategic objectives of the four diversity, equity, and inclusion objectives. It aligned with three out of four directly. So it not only benefits our community, but it is meeting our goals to move forward on these holidays. And just a few prepared remarks. There are three reasons why the board should move to grant these holidays, Diwali and Eid, as a school holiday. They are an act of love for the individual, an act of love for the family, and an act of love for the community. First, act of love of the individual. In this case, I'm referring to the student at Watchon Hills. Teenage years are a time of self-exploration. It's necessary that we foster and encourage the chance for students to form their own identity. Faith can be an integral part of identity formation. To deprive our students of this opportunity can stunt their growth. Faith can be a beacon of light, guidance, and comfort during uncertain times. And boy, have we had uncertain times. Second, granting these holidays to students shows a love of family. Celebrating holiday traditions is an important part of building a strong bond between family and community. They connect us to our history and help us celebrate generations of family. These religious traditions build a sense of stability. Regardless of whatever else is happening, family members can look forward to and count on participating in family tradition. Depriving students of the opportunity to build these bonds can create feelings of alienation. I can only speak from experience. When I share that my children, this past Ramadan, passed thirty days, it's pretty amazing. They volunteer, they did acts of charity. But they were denied the ability to celebrate with their community without penalty. And what I'm referring to when I say penalty, the existing policy that we have in place right now. As much as this is about diversity, equity, and inclusion, it is also inextricably linked to mental health. Finally, granting these holidays shows a love of community. When we produce healthy and happy children, they grow up to form stable families, and then in turn, create strong communities. Don't we all benefit from that? In addition, at Watchon Hills, we're looking to create strong leaders with depth, character, and pride in their own diverse identities. These are the future qualities companies are looking for when they want to hire. Why? Because companies have found that the more diverse a company is, the higher the diversity dividend. Greater diversity means delivering on greater organizational performance, positive external reputation, and trust, which gives, which gives companies a competitive edge. The most diverse and inclusive companies are thirty-three percent more likely to have higher returns. Implementing these changes helps better prepare our students to the workforce. Finally, it's with great pride that I draw the board's attention to the groundbreaking work of Professor Sahin and Dr. Terucci. You've never heard their names, then you should know them. This is who they are. You may recognize this from the cover of the New York Times. They are two Muslim scientists whose work as the founders of the BioNTech and Pfizer COVID vaccine will enable Watchon Hills students to go back full-time in the fall. Professor Sahin recently stated, we need a global vision that gives everyone an equal chance. Intelligence is equally distributed across all ethnicities. As a society, we have to ask ourselves, how can we give everyone a chance to contribute to society? His words ring true. How can we give everyone an equal chance? Many, many districts in New Jersey, not just Edison, have already taken steps to acknowledge Eid and Diwali as school holidays. And those are over a decade old. It's time for us to catch up, Watchon Hills. I hope that you as a board will send a message to all future professor, Professor Sahin's, all future athletes, artists, scientists, innovators of our Watchon Hills community. The message is a message of love to the student, family, and community. We are stronger together. Many thanks to the broader coalition of Watchon Hills for supporting this initiative to create religious equity. Thank you so much.
Anybody else like me? Again, if you just break your name and the town.
Hello. I'm Maria, I attend here, sophomore.
As a student at Watchon Hills, holidays are a very important time for us. It gives us the opportunity to focus on family and culture. Grades are our students' first and foremost duty. Without dedicated time off, how can we truly take our mind off of the schoolwork we are missing? Consequences for a student missing school can be dire. It's not about postponing an assignment for a test. Missing one day can mean missing an introduction to a new math unit, missing chem practice, and a new vocab unit in Spanish. It puts students at a disadvantage academically. During the last thirty days of Ramadan, we fasted and reflected on how to be better people. We gave back to our community, volunteering numerous ways. I spent each day of that month thinking about how to better myself and our community. It would be nice to know that my community feels the same about me. Thank you.
Yes, please state your name.
Hi, my name is Nora, and I'm a current eighth grade GMS student and future Watchon Hills freshman. As a minority religion student in our school district, I deserve the right to celebrate my religious holidays free of anxiety and stress. In all my past, in all of my past years here, I have not gotten that. In order to practice my religion, I must be set back in my lessons. I value my grades very much as an honor straight A student, but this obstacle puts me at a disadvantage to my non-minority peers. In order to celebrate my holidays, I must individually contact each and every teacher of mine on that day, and am constantly worried for fear of failure in my classes. For students with more severe anxiety, this process can be their personal torture. As a board who strives for equality between students, religious equality is a large part of that and should be a focus. It's not at all fair for religious minority students to be unable to celebrate their holidays free of worry and stress. Thank you.
Hello. Hi, my name is Noor. I'm a resident of Watchon. My family and I have lived in Watchon for a little bit over a decade now. And while I left graduate from a private Islamic school in South Jersey, I've not attended the Watchon Hills regional high school system. I feel as if it is my duty as a Muslim American to be here today to vouch for every Muslim student and everything new, due to every other Indian student who celebrates Diwali. I have served as a volunteer as an EMT at the Watchon Rescue Squad ever since the winter of 2017, and continue to serve my community. And just as, as previous speakers have mentioned, we expect the same as residents of this wonderful community. I hope that the board recognizes the importance and necessity of recognizing and celebrating Eid and Diwali holidays. And I pray that our community continues to grow and flourish as students continue to raise their religious, social, and ethnic identities unapologetically in this country. School systems of Clifton, T-Dunk, Jersey City, Newark, Cliffside Park, Edison, Elizabeth, Hillside, and South Queenswood, among others, have already taken steps to recognize Eid and Diwali holidays in their school districts. And I hope that our community follows suit. We know exactly what we're wishing for today. Watchon Hills, it's about time. Now more than ever, I ask your acceptance and recognition of these holidays. And through our community, you'll find yet more love and more light and light upon light. Thank you.
Hello. Hi, my name is Janie, and I'm in sixth grade at the Greenbrook Middle School. And I'm a future Watchon Hills student. I love my religion. I love our traditions and our culture, and especially Eid with all the food and gifts. We, we fast for a month in Ramadan. On the last day of Ramadan, we celebrate Eid. We, we eat after fasting for a month. This day means a lot to me, and it hurts when I can't fully enjoy it because I'm taking a test. I'm here to speak not only for myself, but for all the Muslims in the community, and we would like the day off. Last night, instead of listening to our prayer prayers, I was seeing the science test. I was worried about failing it, and I had not gotten much things to do. I, sorry. I, I think the entire Muslim community would benefit from this. That means you can spend a special day with your loved ones and with your community. It would relieve stress from the students, giving them a day off and allow them to enjoy their holiday. Overall, I think everyone would benefit, you know, as you pray your time.
Hello. Good evening, good evening, everyone. My name is Ayu. I'm a current resident of Watchon. And like many of you, Watchon is a place near and dear to my heart. I believe the strength of its community makes it the great town that it is. But how do we take a strong community, though, and make it stronger than it already is? We connect with others to create a stronger community. We communicate with each other to create a stronger community. Most of all, we learn from one another to make a strong community. As a Muslim, I believe that all races, religions, and teachings should be accepted in a community. And that in order for us to succeed in such a task, we must acknowledge all types of people in our community. We celebrate holidays because their origins teach values that help us advance as a community. From kindness to gratefulness, even selflessness, the lessons religion and religious holidays teach are endless. It is time for every religion to truly be a day off, whether it be Eid or Diwali. Let's strengthen our community, ladies and gentlemen, and help the people, and help the people understand each other on a higher level than we have already achieved. As the great Helen Keller once said, "Alone, we can do so little. Together, we can do so much." We need your help. You guys are amazing. I know you guys can do this. Thank you.
Good evening, respected board members, parents, and staff. My name is Dr. Malika Sheikh, and I'm a school psychologist in the Watchon Borough Public School District for thirteen years. And I am currently in private practice in Burnettsville, New Jersey. I am here tonight to express my support with students in this community to receive a day off on Eid and Diwali. Over the years, I have observed this community's population become more diverse, increasing the need to become more tolerant and inclusive. It was wonderful to hear from my students over the years about the holidays, traditions, and foods that encompass their identities and are the fabric of their families. I remember when I was growing up as a Muslim student in Edison. Yes, I grew up in Edison thirty-six years ago. It was very stressful and anxiety-provoking to decide whether to miss school and have to make up all the work or celebrate with family and enjoy one of the biggest holidays in our religion. For Muslim kids, Eid is like Christmas or Hanukkah. We go for prayers in the morning, spend time with family and friends, eating delicious food and open gifts. Most importantly, Eid is the conclusion of the thirty days of fasting during the long month of Ramadan, making it one of the biggest holidays of our religion as well as being celebrated by two billion people around the world. Diwali as well is celebrated by many billions, I think, sir, you had mentioned. More than a billion around the world, exactly. We urge you to consider joining other public school districts in New Jersey who have given Eid and Diwali off for their students. Personally, as you can see, it's very emotional because thirty-six years ago, as a student, it was so stressful, and I'm emotional because I lived through it. And now Edison finally has Eid and Diwali off. But it is extremely exciting, provoking for kids to have to decide, and actually, as an adult, when I worked in the Watchon School District, to not be able to take your day off on your religious holiday. Because there were many times when I did not take a day off. So I just want you to think about that. We're in a different time. We all have to move forward, and we have to really be there for our students. And not only that, but I will tell you, I see students from these, these sending districts in my private practice. And I will tell you that the inclusivity is really needed. So thank you so much for considering, for your consideration. Have a great night and be well.
Would anybody else like to respond? We will close the first opportunity for public comment. Everyone who would like to remain present with the meeting is welcome to. If you would like to depart, you may do so as well. We'll be on a moment, and then we'll start off with a word discussion. Thank you all for coming. The first one on our list before discussion is future action items. Does anybody have any questions for our administration about? Mr. President, I would like to amend number one. And number two, under A, to read June first. Excellent choice. They were just trying to be polite. It's hard, yeah, it's hard to approve a meeting that we're at. And then the other thing, I just, in the D section. What's under? Yeah, it's under twenty-seven. In the very first part, there's two items there that, those two items related to tennis court, related to a storm that one of the light poles went down and broke the fence. And we did get insurance reimbursement outside our deductible, which is one of my. But I just wanted to add that underneath those two items, it says vendor banker. And that has classroom furniture, and we did get figures for that. And you will see that on June fifteenth, that's a hundred and thirty-one thousand. Five classrooms, and we had budgeted two hundred thousand. So we're pretty pleased. Thank you. Any questions? Anybody have any comments on board votes? Morrison? It's just an update on the regionalization work. We're waiting for the new short form application to be released this week, which will allow us to put in and observe the funding. So we've been waiting since the last meeting for that, to formalize that short form, so we will get that in right away. I'd also like to suggest a committee meet for the end of June, just so we can go over next steps. And we're expecting to get some recommendations of some potential consultants that would be able to lead us in the works, begin to plan out, okay, what's our, what are our next steps now that the funds are observed and how we can move the process forward. And of course, as districts demonstrate their interest in participating, it would be great to hear about that. Thank you. Do you want that meeting before our next board meeting, or do you want to stay in the back? Probably. It would probably be after. The other comments about board votes? I believe that takes us to agenda items.
Mr. President, I'd like to move resolutions A1 through A3.
And the second. Would anybody like to pull any for separate discussion or separate vote? Is number all called votes? Mr. Brenner?
Yes.
Dr. Chan?
Yes.
Mr. Fallon?
Yes.
Mr. Hunsinger?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
This is over. Potter? Prassa? Dr. Shubil?
Yes.
Mr. President, I'd like to move resolutions C1 through C14.
And the second. Would anybody like to pull anything for separate discussion or separate vote? Ms. Barrow?
Yes.
Dr. Chan?
Yes.
Mr. Fallon?
Yes.
Mr. Hunsinger?
Yes.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
This is over. Potter? Prassa? Dr. Shubil?
Yes.
Mr. President, I'd like to move resolutions C1 through D3.
Second. Anybody like to pull anything for separate discussion or separate vote? Ms. Barrow? Mr. Brenner?
Yeah.
Dr. Chan?
Yes.
Mr. Fallon?
I will abstain on the last item on E2.
Mr. Hunsinger?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
No. Potter? Prassa? Dr. Shubil?
Yes.
I made a mistake. I should have abstained on E1. I was upset, but I didn't.
Okay. I got it. Thank you. This takes us to our second opportunity for public comment.
And then I have to say, we definitely don't wear masks anymore.
Let's say now we'll close this second opportunity for public comment if we want to have a business.
Earlier tonight, when we were going through the strategic plan, we just put up on this screen. I would really like it if there's an ability to put it on the two bars, so that people in the audience can see it. Additionally, I don't understand why it's not deemed one of our computers we're doing it. So we can watch it in front of us.
Yes, I mean, that's Zoom, but so it's more for the post-hoc right, probably should. And I think that's something we didn't talk about, starting to use the technology here. I'm sure we could do that, you know, it's a great discussion, representation in the future.
And the second thing, having ended the last committee on Zoom and seeing this, we may want to get discouraged.
We talked about that. I guess the part of the discussion for that, well, part of our discussion for that will be if we're not continuing. It normally wouldn't be this hard part, but we're only going to have one more meeting, which is either this hard part. So we may or may not. Because I think our plans collide to no more masks.
Since you bring it up, we might as well talk about that now. So as you, as Dr. Ju had already mentioned, we're not the private wear masks. In our discussion before this meeting, we brought solidarity with the teachers, students, and parents and everyone else who's asked to come in during the building wearing masks. So we thought it would be appropriate that we continue to do so. Plus, there are still students coming in and out of the school while we're here at the board meeting. I thought it would send a less than desirable message that we're walking in without and they're expected to walk in with. Assuming that students will be out of the building before July and that the numbers still continue to look good, our assumption, and I haven't heard any comments yet, because we still have the rest of the month if you want to continue the distance and mask or not for whatever reason. And I want to show that privately would think it would be our best to accommodate everyone. And while Peter had mentioned the screen, I did get a text message from someone in the public that when they got a board member that's not physically here, their icon takes up half the screen, and then the screen that people are seeing in the public out at the meeting becomes much smaller. And so we might think about ways to improve that technology as well so that they optimize the viewing screen size.
We've been YouTube live streaming. The issue is when we're members. It makes it, because that's the same thing, like tonight, I would have projected the presentation here and there instead of on that screen via Zoom, but because we're zooming and trying to do it in person, it, it makes that a little, just so we're difficult.
Beyond the end of the That is the current plan.
What about the ability to that happens soon? I mean, that's what the board is about to decide.
I think it's, I feel like it goes beyond the board.
We actually do have a policy about participating. You're not supposed to do it regularly. You're only supposed to have a certain number of board members doing it, so, so, so we actually tend to do that, but we may want to change it so that it's not via the screen, because especially if we're going to be using other technology at the meeting. And plus, the public, well, I think will be able to see us better if not via Zoom. You know, Anthony, he's better.
Yeah.
Anthony, if we wanted to do phone rather than Zoom. So if we, but I guess could we, can we do it?
They'll show up as a
Well, let's say we didn't, we don't want to do Zoom, but we want like the whole, back in the old day, before Zoom, we just kind of conference.
Yeah. Yeah. We even, I don't even know we have conferences, but yeah, people kind of fall in here.
We can, we'll, we'll get, put our heads together and talk, because Peter, that's a great point about tonight's presentation.
Because I did fool around with the last meeting, and when I switched over to most of you who were talking, we would focus on this, and it was eliminating the environment from a loop hitter. But even so, this camera, we all look like ants.
Well, once we can stick phones to Zoom, that'll, that'll be better. So on YouTube, I don't know. They see, they see that.
They see that, right?
They see that.
That's what, that's what you said.
Except on the device that might be smaller than that screen.
Because this, when I was talking about, you know, beginning it all sort of to not just going YouTube or Zoom, but you got to have the capability, many presentations online here.
Yeah, this was, I, I was just on the district website, but what I can do is at least, you know, send like have a committee, right, before?
Yeah.
And they were even making TV.
It was a cable.
Yeah. The reason we haven't done it via TV is because they, all the towns do not get the same. Not get the, they don't have the ability to access the nation. And also, the way, the only way to do it was for us to, we can't do it live. We had to take the meeting and change it into a VHS tape from visual file. For, yes, for the, right.
Yeah.
So that's why we, and
And then put it onto a reel-to-reel thing.
I really. And then not all of the towns that have access to the channel. So this is, I mean, YouTube, it's very easy for everybody to get on. But I think the two things we want to talk about is that if we do have a board member being presented virtually, which again, our policy, we did have a policy around that before this, but it's certainly more restrictive than what's going to allow, you know, pandemic.
Which policy?
The one about
Board of members.
Board member attendance, we have that policy.
We do. It's, it's pre-pandemic, it was not, it was preferred that we don't get into having, that's the way more.
Yes. Right, right.
But I think, wasn't there a wasn't there a, some sort of state policy that went into effect that allowed government entities to be like this? Yeah, so then I missed a question.
Why does that expire?
Exactly.
I think when that, I was going to say, I think when the health emergent, when he no longer has a health emergency in place.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But what we'll do between now and the next meeting, because we are going to have presenters here, and they may be, it's not going to be a, you know, powerful presentation, but they may be showing things on video. Is we'll put our heads together to figure out what the best way is to show that at the meeting to people at home and here, so we'll come up with a better option for that.
Can we bring up the whole policy for conversations for the board to find out with the state when they're changing their regulation? I sit on a New Jersey committee, and they're still virtual like for the rest of the year. So I suspect that the state's also
The rest of twenty-five hundred.
The rest of, it's not a school committee, so it's the rest of the
I think in terms of policies, we're going to go beyond I would miss the last one.
Great. What I suggest, I don't know if you guys want to, the board meetings coming up, but I know we're kind of committed to the best, but the distancing thing would probably help if we can, again, I don't, I don't want to make anyone feel uncomfortable. That's something we should consider because for the public is the
We go back to two people.
We're like a half a mile away.
Set it one person.
Right, so. But you can't get the
Yeah, we can, well, we can zoom it in more because we don't
If we're closer, you'll, you'll probably get a better view. But if you have discomfort with three feet, and there are signs that three versus six is probably not very different. That's another comment. It was Barrow. I thought you had your hand up for other businesses, or no longer?
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, everyone, and appreciate your